All right, well, it's 5:00 and the whole committee's here, so I guess we should get started.
Okay.
Everybody to the rules meeting of, what's today? July 9th, 2020. Hard to keep track these days. Yeah, it's 5:00 PM. Do we have minutes to approve? It's been so long. All right, if we aren't sure, let's go back on that next time, I guess.
Why don't you set that new rules, new rule to the committee, huh? To the council?
Yeah.
Do that.
Like, I know, I just, it's been so long, I actually am not. Okay, so I think we're gonna focus on charter stuff. And Dan, I think the, you were gonna share the documents so that we could follow along. And, you know, just to recap, when the Charter Review Committee met last year, we sort of, we went over the entire charter and we sort of broke it down into two categories. One of those categories is things that we believe had a very high chance that the legislature would want ratification from the voters on. Because, just as a recap for anyone watching at home, when you have, or watching later, I guess, when you do, when a city amends its charter, the legislature needs to basically sign off on the changes. If the changes change the way that the, that the citizens of the city sort of interact with their government, then they generally want the voters to sign off and, you know, on the ballot. If there are sort of more technical changes that don't really, like, just really change people are interacting with their government, they don't necessarily do that. So, we had a couple changes, ranked choice voting for your mayor, that went to the polls and passed. And then we had a whole bunch of changes that we sort of, as a shorthand, referring to housekeeping, that, you know, we sort of finished, we were, we continued to work on after sending those ranked choice voting for your mayor off to the legislature. So those, you know, the committee finished up in August. And after finishing up, we sent our proposed changes to the city solicitor, who then worked through them all and sent them back to us. And that's where we are now, is sort of looking at the, like, the comments that the solicitor had on the proposed changes of the committee, with the idea being that we can then turn some or all of these recommendations into a legislative petition to send to the legislature. And provided that they agree with us that those are kind of just housekeeping, they would then take a vote to amend our charter to include those changes. So, these are, yeah, the changes that the committee made with the city solicitors back on. Things that either he thought the language could be maybe legally confusing, so he wanted some more, or he was worried that we weren't actually able to do the thing we were proposing. So, without further ado, let's just jump in and get.
Just a couple of comments. When I sent what I called the clean version, which was a poor term, I think, to the council and to the committee, that was my attempt to take all of the recommendations of the city attorney and put them into a document that incorporates that language. Because his markup, and I have both of those documents. I have the document that marks up the original recommendations from the committee. Was difficult to understand, but I tried to turn those into a document that only incorporates what we want the council to vote on. However, I am fully cognizant of the fact that I may have made errors in doing that. And I needed the view, the eyes of all the other people, all of you here, to make sure that I didn't misinterpret his recommendations or that I didn't make an error in bringing his markups into the document. So, that's where we're at right now. And I can share the screen with each of those documents. Can you both see these two?
I can see one. I think we're probably only gonna be able to see one at a time.
Can you see the one that says "most recent Tanner"? Which one are you looking at? Can you see my?
Well, now there's like a...
Blank screen.
Yeah.
I don't know how this works then. I wanted to show both of them, but I'll try.
I'm currently looking at the one that says "clean draft".
All right, that's the one that has my changes based on what the city attorney has. Now, next to it, I have the markup version. You can't see this here, this markup?
No, you'd have to, you'd have to stop sharing the one and share this, Dan.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll stop sharing the clean version. And just, I'll just put up this version. If we make changes that the mayor and everybody agrees with, I wanted to put them right in here. But let's, let's go through it and you tell me what you'd like to do. I'm glad you have that. And Omar are there, and Tom, you know what we tried to do, so I can try and explain them. Peg?
I'll let Tom call on me.
Counselor call.
Okay.
Can we, should we use the one that Dan has touched up? Or should we use the one that we got back from the attorney? I mean, I would prefer to use the one that we got back from the attorney. In the event that Dan did make a typo, we should be working from the latest official document, don't you think, Tom? Or it's up to you, I suppose?
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes sense to me. I mean, I think, Dan, what you've done in sort of, sort of cleaning this up makes, I think, a lot of, is probably gonna go a long way towards what the final thing looks like. But I would kind of like to see where he, sort of exactly what he said. Mayor LaChapelle, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in about what version. And I concur with President Coniff that we should use the one that the attorney sent back. And certainly use Counselor Riss's version for reference and context.
A problem with either.
Yeah, and I also, I guess I wanted to, I am looking for some context of the work that we're doing now through this committee. How does it relate to what the charter does? Like, will the Charter Review Committee be reformed or reassembled to go over this doc, like, this document after it's being worked on? I know, Dan and Tom, that we separately touched base with this over the last several months. And if nothing else, have kind of forgotten that, those conversations and the path forward.
My understanding?
Where we are on this is that we want to respect the work of this Charter Review Committee and move this into a legislative petition. At that point, if the council feels, and I think there are some on the council who do feel this way, that we should have another Charter Review Committee, then the scope of that Charter Review Committee would probably be mostly the sort of stuff that we looked at last time and concurred that we didn't have time to address. So, you know, there were a lot of things, I know that, you know, there were, there were a number of topics that we brought up that we said, hey, there could be something kind of interesting here. But we were just looking at a timeline of getting something to the legislature by April, and it wasn't gonna happen. So, with that in mind.
Okay.
Number of things that were tabled that I know there was, like, interest from those members. Just say nothing of what other people might be. But, I think that's where, Dan and Peg, would you concur with what I just said?
I agree. I think we're at the point now where this particular review needs council approval. What the Rules Committee will put forward is a recommendation that we, that the council approve a document now that we can get a legislative, get to the legislature. I would recommend that if we get stuck on something that we can't decide that we feel is right, or if the mayor doesn't agree with something, we just reject that, I guess. Because that could be something the next committee deals with. I'm hoping that doesn't happen, because I don't think any of this is that controversial. On the other hand, who knows? But I think this needs to be approved by the full council. That's the next step. And the mayor is here so that we don't have to go back and forth. The mayor approves the language as we go, and then we send it to the full council.
Yeah, now ideally, like...
Clean version was to have something, whatever we do now, we have to send something to the full council. That is, an attempt to give them the version that we want. And I like the, Tom, it'd be great if you did that, because then your, your eyes are there. You know what we're talking about tonight.
Right.
That make sense?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
And just to say, like, in an ideal world, I think what we're doing tonight could have been handled by last year's Charter Review Committee, but just timing-wise, it wasn't gonna work out that way.
Well, yeah.
Rather than...
On the other hand, I think that the council has to approve something. So, once we get it back, I guess, I guess you're right. If we had a longer time period, when we got the thing back from the city attorney, the Charter Review Committee could say, all right, let's agree or disagree on these things and send it back to the council that way.
Right, and that's kind of what we did for ranked choice voting.
It's too bad, but a lot of things happened that made it hard to do.
Yeah, it was just a tight timeline. So, you know, our thought was, okay, let's, let's handle this last step. And then if there's gonna be a 2020 Charter Review Committee, which I think is an interesting idea, they can sort of have all this off their plate and they can sort of focus on sort of new, new business.
Okay, so, do you all see this one? This is the most recent city attorney. Do you see that up on your screens now?
I do.
Okay, and as it says here, it's the one that we got, April 23rd. The language that, Barbie?
I don't see it.
You don't see any of this? This is the shared, I just did, only one thing is sharing.
Okay. Then it must be me, okay.
Do you see it, Mayor?
I do.
Okay. Well, it's important to take...
Too many screens going.
Okay.
Do one thing, and it's "most recent Tanner Charter, April 23rd".
Okay, I'll figure this out. I don't know why, I don't know why.
Do you not see anything?
No, I just see your, all of your lovely faces. I mean, it could be that I have two screens going. I'll keep working on it, you guys, start.
Okay, Tom, would you like me to just go over these line by line and?
Sure, I mean...
Some of it's pretty simple.
Yeah, we, yeah, let's, let's, let's just take it one at a time where there's the changes. If, you know, we don't need to endlessly go over the really basic stuff. But just as a recap for folks who might be watching, I think let's at least...
Well, I'm kind of glad Sarah and Omar are here, because they can help me with my memory on why we made changes. Some of them were very much grammatical, and I actually thank Sarah for that, because she's, she's been good on that. We started off with the definitions. The word administrative was redundant in here, so we got rid of it. We added some commas, because it made sense to have commas there.
So far, so good.
Going down, this is Mark's first comment. He wanted capitalization. The word "city bulletin board", if you look at my version, I did that change.
Okay.
Moving on, "city officer", we didn't like that at all. The red lines are what's currently in the charter. We changed it to what you see here, or "persons in charge of any department or division of the city". Mark okayed that, because he had no comment. And "to be consistent with state law definitions is why we did it". Anybody have questions to that? Does that, everybody remember that? Omar's, and Tom. Is Omar still with us? I don't see his lovely face here.
He is, he's there.
He's still here. And I'm monitoring the thing, so if anyone needs to raise their hand, I'll be able to see that, if you do it.
Moving on, and Mayor, if you, if you don't like something, it's important that we hear that, I would think, right now. Here's the major change. We attempted here to bring modern digital communication into our charter to help with, in the definitions, to help later on, when we wanted to talk about how the council, the mayor, the city government communicates with the city. So, we made these definitions. Mark had, over here, you'll see, he had very good ideas, I thought, in what electronic publication should be, electronic communication, electronic service. I think, and I don't have it up now, when I did my clean version, I replaced these with this. Am I correct there, Tom?
Yes, that's correct.
So, this is a major change in which we, I agreed with Mark that this should happen. He says, "I think it's too broad", you know, etc. Should we probably limit to postings on the city's website? And I think, as I recall, Barbara had the same concerns. So, I liked where he went here. And also, just another comment, if Mark has to defend or interpret something in the charter, it's good that we use his language, it helps him. So, that was something, my rationale for doing that.
You know, so...
This whole definition went into my clean version. Anybody have any questions or comments, I guess?
So, this was something where I always felt like, I thought what we were doing was really, was good and made sense. And I also thought that, you know, with the language, I was, I thought we made an improvement. I never thought it was perfect. So, I think that these make sense. I know this was something that Sarah had a lot of thoughts on, so I'm interested if you have any, any feedback on this new language.
Well, my concern was that by limiting publication to the city bulletin board and to a newspaper, we would be limiting the access for members of the community, for citizens regarding, you know, what they're able to see of their city government. We had a lot, I'm just skimming these as I talk. We had a lot of round and round on this. Like, it was difficult. And I'm feeling kind of good about this, because my upshot was, I want things to be more accessible. And, you know, when our charter was written, probably most people got the newspaper. And I can tell you, I don't get the newspaper. You know, like, I get the e-edition, which, you know, like, do I skim the, the city publications? I do not. So, accessibility, I think, is important. As we went on later, this is where the electronic communication versus publication came in. We were talking about, can you notify city councilors by email of certain things? And, you know, that, the idea of that was to streamline the process, to forestall any, well, forestalling, and try to make sure that, you know, everyone knows that they're communicating with one another. So, that was a lot of our discussion, if I'm remembering it clearly. I'm liking, I'm, I'm feeling like this electronic service is an addition from him. I don't remember us talking about that. And that actually feels kind of good, because we've kind of struggled a little bit with, how do we put something in here that's not so inflexible? That by trying to improve, we don't just end up in the same predicament 20 years from now. So, that's, that's what I remember. That's what's important to me, is...
I think, I think, Sarah, the reason he said originally that things are too broad is why he took electronic service as something other than just electronic communication, so that there was a better definition. And I agree, I liked what he said there.
Yeah, I, I think that we struggled a little bit with this, and the outside perspective, I think.
Big time, we did.
We struggled a lot with this. And I think, as, as Tom said, it was still a little clunky. I think nobody was completely satisfied with what we came up with.
But do you agree with his, his definitions here? These three definitions, to me, on the right side, are what I put into the final document, because I thought they were much cleaner and made a lot of sense.
I don't feel like that's outside of the, the spirit of what we had talked about. Barb's concern was she didn't want to be adding on extra costs and extra burdens to things, which, I guess, I don't know her job, I can't speak for her, but I don't see anything sort of overtly doing that, anyway.
Yes. Well, I know that...
I was gonna say, actually, almost exactly the same thing that Sarah's saying, that this seems to have the same spirit as what we were trying to accomplish. And if our attorney feels that the language is gonna hold up better and be more clear and accomplish the same thing, then I'm, I'm pretty happy with that.
How do you feel about it, Mayor? Well, the clutter.
Yeah, mute.
You're muted, Mayor, you're muted, Mayor.
I, I'm, I'm just, for the sake of efficiency, I'm just not, I'm fine with it. And if I have a question or don't agree with a change, then I'll pipe up. But, no, I actually like this language a lot.
Okay. Moving on, this was just some grammar changes he recommended here. General laws. And I didn't have a problem with those. Anybody have any questions on these?
That's fine with me.
Majority vote. This was one that was changed in 2010. And the multi-member body, I guess he changed that. That was his thinking here.
It's fine.
Do you have any problem going, moving on?
Move on.
I think, Peg, you got your document up?
Yes, I'm watching now.
Okay. This is new language, which he didn't have, which he made a couple of changes, but we defined open meeting law here.
Okay.
And referenced it, right?
Yep.
Tom, remember?
Yep.
And he made some grammar changes there. That's all the definitions. Shall we move on, Tom?
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, one article down, eight to go.
Composition term of office. This is where we did a major thing, and he was gonna look at it. The word precinct, and this was, actually, Tom, I think this was your idea, to make it consistent with what Barbara uses when she does voting.
Yeah, so basically...
We would change the word "district city councillor" and "ranked choice voting", his saying here, if we change this. But this hasn't been changed, so when we changed ranked choice voting, we had to use the term that's currently in the charter. But I like, I like being consistent, so there's no confusion with the, with the people. Precinct.
So, when we send it in, what we'll basically have to do is have the legislative petition also include the new charter language that was...
Exactly.
And making those same changes there. For what it's worth, I, like, I don't, like, if we decide that, like, I know that there was, um, yeah, there was some things about, where did this all land? Because I heard him saying that maybe we shouldn't be doing this, or maybe it's fine to switch district to precinct. Did we decide that it's actually, okay, so it's okay?
I called up somebody at the state who I don't remember anymore. And he, and he was, like, really confused that I had this question. And he's like, "What does your charter say?". I'm like, "That's what I'm trying to figure out", as if the charter has to say anything by law. And he was like, "Whatever your charter says". So, the answer that I got was not helpful.
All right, well, let's just, I mean, then, my suggestion is we send it to the legislature, and if they say we can't do it, then...
There you go.
Whatever. It's not, it's not a big difference. Though just the big thing is that I've never heard anyone call me, like, except for in my swearing-in, no one's ever called me the District III City Councillor. It's always been Precinct III. Maps say Precinct 1 through...
Exactly why we tried to change it, to make it consistent.
So, if, so my, my suggestion is that we, we move ahead with that. And if, if for some reason the legislature has a problem with it, then we drop the issue and we just start calling ourselves, you know, District whatever city councilors. But in the meantime...
Just so everybody knows, we did a global change. So, the word "district" was changed to "precinct". This particular, if you see my cursor, that's what we probably should show. I don't know how it would go to the legislature, but the word "district" isn't crossed out everywhere else where it says precinct. It just, word, the word "program" just changed it, right, Tom? I mean...
Yeah.
So, okay.
I mean, I imagine when it becomes like a legislative petition, there'll just be a line that just says, like, "globally amend the word 'district' to precinct". That's just one of the things.
We debated, but we did not make any changes to the council president. I don't know if, if, Peg, if you wanna hear what we debated and didn't do, I mean...
No, it's...
We talked about everything, and where we didn't do it. We could be here all night, because there's a lot that we talked about.
I think we talked about what came needed and what we didn't do. I, I think that'll get us to the finish line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Prohibitions. This was a major change made by the committee. This had to do with, and, and it was not initiated by Omar. This had to do with the fact that one time, we asked Joe McCoy to help us as a dog officer or some animal control. And we know that Omar had to not get paid when he was a softball coach. And we went over this a lot, and we asked the city attorney if he thought it would fly. And he made some changes. But I think his big thing, not sure if I'll call it, if not, then it should be probably become, or he just made some grammatical changes. But we really like trying to do this. And I'm curious how other people feel. I guess, Peg, because, Tom, am I recalling this correctly? This, this is what we ended up with. He made some grammatical changes or language changes in here. But I like the way we ended it.
Right, so that it's basically saying that if, I don't know, like, you know, right, to bring up the Joe McCoy example, or, or if, you know, really, if any of us, like, we all have skills, and if there is a temporary vacancy or something, and a councillor were to say, "Hey, I can help out with that a little bit until you find a permanent replacement", that if the council signs off on it and the Ethics Division is okay with it, then it's okay for, that it's okay going forward. Omar, I see your hand.
You're still muted, Omar.
I'm sorry, I just wanna give you my sample. By the way, I just wanna put on the record, this, this wasn't my idea.
No, I already said that.
Yes, I just wanna say that again, just, just in case. When I decided to run for city council, I was coaching before running for city council. As soon as I was running as a city council, I stopped getting my stipend as a, as a coach. And one of the conversations that we had was, is it was fair? Not just for me, because I'm okay and I can be, I love being co, I've been, I love to coach softball, and I can keep doing it without getting the stipend. But that would limit it, anyone else to run for city council if there was a coach or serving in any other position, the, they get any stipend from, from the city. And that's why I think the committee touched this.
Right, and, you know, the idea is that, like, there's a difference between receiving a stipend for coaching, you know, a city team and being, say, like, a police officer or a firefighter, or like, working in the planning department, where obviously, like, you know, you couldn't possibly be expected to be objective working one of those jobs and also voting on the funding for your department. But that in these sort of part-time or temporary capacities, as long as the Ethics Committee didn't see anything wrong with it, that we thought that that would be okay, you know, to, to do. And even, you know, or at least that we would be able to take that up as a vote on the city council. So, that's sort of where we landed. Does anybody have any, I mean, I think that's pretty reasonable, but does anybody have any objections or con... So that's sort of where we landed, does anybody have any, I mean, I think that's pretty reasonable, but does anybody have any objections or concerns? Okay.
To this section, I'm sorry. Okay, I have a comment.
Okay.
So Mark Tanner's wording under provided this employment is temporary part-time is to say not permanent. Do we agree that we should change temporary permanent, part-time to not permanent, that's number one? Then he also has a comment in there around, he calls, after it says state ethics division of the attorney general. The member may receive a stipend, shouldn't that be the council member? I don't know why it just says member, but um not to exceed the salary of the council. Um and then he has another comment here around except as otherwise provided herein. And I'm guessing that's related to no former member of the city council, blah, 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 except other as otherwise provided herein. So I, do we agree that his changes make sense, or are we just moving on with the way it was?
Right, so where he says except, so, oh. Yeah, so I guess what he's saying, when he say no si- no former member of the city council shall hold any compensate. I see what he's saying here, uh shall hold any compensated appointed city office or city employment until six months. Right, so that basically makes it seem like it's it's fine to do this when you're a counselor, but not until, like, not after you leave. So I, that makes sense to insert that language.
And I don't know if I did that, so that's a good catch, Peg, because I think that's important. Because if we're gonna let somebody coach a team while he's a counselor, and then can't do it for six months after, doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and so then the only other question is, should we change not permanent, temporary part-time to not permanent? And then I'm I'm with the rest of this.
I I think it should be. He wants a change, and again, I feel like he he feels better about not permanent, but I could go with either.
Temporary slash part-time is unclear now that I look at it, is it temporary or part-time, temporary and part-time, so.
I think not permanent actually reflects the fact that um we're not saying this person is a permanent employee of the city.
Correct.
Better.
If you're coaching a team, like, you, I mean, you could do that for years, but it's not like you're getting um.
Hang on, Omar, hang on.
A pension plan or anything, yeah, Omar, what's up?
I can answer that, uh as a coach, they appoint you every year, same way with all the positions. If they're gonna appoint you every year, so it's not permanent, I get no permanent is the right word to add there.
Okay, so I'm fine with that, if you guys are fine with that.
Yeah.
So Tom, I'm I'm sorry to put this on you, but I've done too much of it, and I think I'll make more mistakes. If you could take this and everything we talked about and turn it into the document we wanna present to the full council, I'd like you to do that, all right?
Um I'm fine with that, but I uh I'm not the one with control over the document right now.
No, I I'm not doing that change now, but if you could remember, for instance, I don't think I added except as otherwise provided in my. My clean version.
Okay.
Do it, and and then have you take a look, I I how about if I do that, I'll try to do it and have you take a look at it?
Whatever uh whatever works best for you, yeah. Yeah, all right.
Whenever we decide tonight, we have to turn it into something that the full council votes on, is my point.
Yes, no, I see what you're saying, um yeah, that's fine, I mean, worst comes to worst, I can just look back through this video and.
Well, I, well, yeah, okay, that's even better. Okay, moving on.
Okay.
Expenses, we had a lot of debate over this. Marcus had some concerns on this, so he there reasonably added. Um we added this language to make it in, make it such. Tom and Sarah and Omar, as I recall, we were concerned that a counselor could say, I made these. I I incurred these expenses going to the meeting, and because the charter says this, you have to reimburse me. So we wanted to add that language, am I correct on that? That's why we did that.
I think that makes sense, right, because I could really just rack up any sort of expense right now and say, hey, it was uh necessary. In the performance of my duty, and there's there's no actual um process right now to to oversee that. So we were adding that the expense has to be approved by the council president and the budgeted funds have to be available.
We wanted to make sure that there was a, you know, you can't just ask for it. And it's funny, that's never happened, but we anticipated a possibility of that happening. Do you understand, is this okay with you, Peg?
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any money, so it's kind of moot, but yeah, I get your point.
Well, yeah, that's what he's saying here.
Let's just move on, it's fine.
Okay.
Well, so the one thing is, yeah, so so Mark, I guess, had some concerns that. The council president could unilaterally blo- block repayment, so if there's some sort of political discourse between the president. It could be an issue.
Nice.
I guess that's, I guess that's true, but I I mean, that's that's also, like, if you had a particularly spiteful city council president. There's a bunch of ways they could abuse that power right now. I do think that there has to be somebody signing off on those expenses, so.
Yeah, I would think if if we had a budget, you know, uh there would be a process wrapped around this. And I can't imagine that if there was a process that was tied back to finance in the treasury and audit department. That if they got an invoice for something and I said, yeah, don't pay that, I'm not sure that would be kosher.
Right now, it it has to be approved by the full council, so if we did, let's say we approved that travel budget that we put in. Somebody wanted to put in for five hundred dollars because they incurred all these expenses. The charter correct right now says that they can do that, and I'm not sure he couldn't fight it in court.
If this, Dan, if the charter committee wants it this way and you guys agreed to it this way, that's the way it's gonna go to this legislature.
Thank you, okay.
We're not gonna change stuff now.
Okay. Um this is being consistent with what we did before, rules of procedure, do you see where I am right now? Everybody okay? Each member?
Yep.
Yep.
Moving on, he made these changes, except if otherwise provided this charter. He didn't like our change here, he crossed that out.
I don't know, what is a section, what is section two nine B?
That relates to.
Yeah, that's where we talk about um.
This is major changes here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, well, so we might actually have to to figure that out, um wait, so, yeah, two nine B, if I recall, that's where we basically say. That if no one objects, we can vote on something in a single night, right?
Right. Sarah, do you have your hand up?
Oh.
All right, so I hear, I didn't.
So I think what he's saying here is he's saying that he's putting except as otherwise provided in the charter. So that we, this is redundant down here.
So if he puts this in, this isn't necessary, I think I see what you're saying, Tom, okay, good.
All right, cool, uh.
This is where we incorporated the word city officers, et cetera, into the notice of access to information. And we used electronic communication. And I think he's okay with that. He added questions by topics. He wanted us to put three and the nu- numeral every time we talk about appointments. Or we decided that, and he wanted the word free put in, or the number three.
Okay.
Yep.
He thinks that's legal, so.
Makes sense.
Uh this is a biggie here. Replaced with Tanner suggested language, he's suggesting, this is where he crossed off language that was in the original charter. And he crossed off some of what we had.
Okay, so what?
Open this, this is where he he wants this language in, and I believe if you look at my document, I put this language into this. I think the intent is still there from his point of view. This is where, Peg, we put into the charter, the idea that we would try, I think this was Tom's idea. To let the people know that we're gonna vote on something in one night.
Yep.
Language, my version that says clean, I think I incorporated it, because he crossed all this out. You get that, do you agree with that?
Okay, so it seems like the the substance of what he's, I I haven't read them both and gone point by point. But it looks like the substance of what he is talking about here is the same. Hold on, what, there's another comment about generally speaking, I disfavor, could you open that up?
Where is that?
Up of the, uh yeah, right there. All right, yeah, that's fine, um so. It it seems like what he is, like the language he's saying, I'm not sure what, where exactly the issue is. But it looks like it's a lot of the same language and that the substance of what he's discussing hasn't changed.
Well, I think throughout the document, he's trying to maintain the intent of the committee. But if he wants it, he wants it to say it this way.
Yeah.
I go to the fact that the city attorney is the one who's gonna have to read this if he has to defend something, so why not use his language? That was my.
Uh yeah, no, I have a, I have no issue with that, I'm I'm just trying to process whether there's any actual like substantive change in here. And I don't see it.
Go ahead, Peg.
He's, he does talk about, we have to make sure that we notify the clerk, I mean, there are changes to the current wording. He's talking about, if you're gonna pass it through all the stages, you have to notify the clerk so that that can be noted on the agenda, yada, 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 yada.
Yeah, so that was my language, that was my suggestion, that if you're going to, so and the reason why I suggested this is because. There, I I I didn't, I I thought that there could be a situation where there was a, let's say, a resolution, for example.
No, I agree, Tom, I'm all in, I totally agree with you.
But yeah, that was my, that was my language, and my suggestion was that it, because that way, if you remember the public scanning the agenda, you can look at and say. Oh, they're gonna try and pass this in one night, if I have a problem with it, I need to be there to talk about that.
Yep.
And really, honestly, if one person showed up and said, I don't think you should pass this in one night, then on most issues, that'd be enough for me to not. Like, if if anyone has a problem with it, then that I probably am fine just sending it to committee, but um.
I think it's, it goes back to transparency, we wanna make it transparent to the public what we're doing. And it may not seem controversial, but.
Right, but we don't know.
Well, let's.
Don't know what other people find controversial.
But are are we in agreement that we'll use this language here that he has instead of this language?
Yeah, it doesn't change the intent at all.
No, and that's what I had done, uh what does he have here? Trying to keep terms used, all right, but anyway, I, this, if we took this entire thing, we cut this all out, so.
Yeah, my one nitpicky point is that he has city counselor, like a legal counselor, and not like a member of a council.
He spelled it wrong.
But I can fix that.
Okay, thank you, Tom, that's a catch that I would have made, of course, my spelling ability is really bad, so. This was further clarification. I I added this language presented by a standing or special committee, because. Um the measure that comes before the council that comes from a committee is different than a measure that might be just presented. At first time voting.
So question, did you put this language in outside of the charter committee, or did this is your?
Charter committee approved this.
Okay, all right.
All of this language is approved by the charter committee.
Okay.
He added, his red lines here.
Yep.
Are his stuff added.
Got it.
But we added this to clarify the difference between a regular measure and stuff coming out of a committee that comes before the, like. If the ordinance committee is approving an ordinance, a counselor can eject to it. And have to be voted against.
Yeah.
Okay, does that make sense, Tom?
Yeah. Yeah, I think you just clarified some stuff here, I don't think that any of this really changes the.
But this is a change that we made that's no, not not currently in the charter.
Yeah, it's just clarifying, it's fine.
Yeah.
Again, we have language here, our intent at the beginning of this was try to save the city money, because we had to put everything in the newspaper. So all of this language dealt with how we can communicate and follow, make sure that things are published. Properly. And we had to make sure, like, the loan authorizations, they have to be published fully and everything, so. The red here is what's in the charter right now, that's been cut and all of this was added. And he had some comments here, um I think in my version, I just incorporated what he did here.
Right.
So I think we're okay, but this is a change to how we uh deal with publication, Peg.
Right.
You're okay with that?
Sure, yeah, I, just to be clear, it is highly unlikely I'm gonna make any changes to this. So I I just wanna, we're just walking through it, but I don't think this committee has the authority to change anything that the charter committee did. We're just kind of cleaning it up, but it is what it is, and that's what should go before the council.
I think we don't have the authority to make it, we could recommend that the council not approve something.
Well, sure.
But I I think, to go to your point, we either, we don't change it, we either say, oh, well, I don't agree with that at all. And we don't, we don't send it to legislature, that could happen, but I wouldn't go in and start making big language changes, because that has to, that starts the process over. If we get to that point, then we have to start a new committee, that's where we should go.
Here's the one case where I'll say, and I don't, I read this before and I didn't see anything like this, but if there was a case where. He might say, you wanted to do A, and you can't do that, but you could do B. Then that might fall to us to decide whether to accept B or just not touch it at all.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
We, I don't actually think we're gonna run into any of that here, but I just, you know, I I do.
The the only thing that makes my heart palpitate a little is if Mark is suggesting a material change to what the charter committee discussed. Then that is, I I would feel not great about approving his change without the charter committee weighing in.
Well, I mean, y- yes, although for what it's worth, rules as, rules in government relations, we we can just. If we were so inclined, we have the power to just draft up a legislative petition anytime we want.
Sure.
So, I mean, I agree, it it sort of flies in the face of the spirit of the charter review committee. And which is why I said that ideally, you know, we would find ourselves, you know, we, like, this would, we would have had a timeline where. They could have been the ones doing this right now, but it doesn't matter, here's where, here, here we are, uh and.
We have the opportunity to say, we don't agree with Mark, so if that creates a problem where. We s- we could send it to Mark to have it legislatively approved, and if he doesn't like it, then it doesn't go. And we fix it the next charter review committee. So we can decide what language we want, we could go back to the language that the committee did, but again, I don't think any of his changes are. Hurt the intent.
Right.
Yeah, I'm down here to counsel review of certain appointments, we, I added special committee here in case there was a special committee to deal with an appointment.
Right, if it was like a really special appointment, they found, started its own working group or something.
He he had forty-five, we changed this to forty-five days to be consistent with the timing in the next paragraph.
Yep.
Yeah, he spelled forty wrong.
He did?
Isn't it F O R T?
British.
Well, he might have been, I don't know, did he go to Oxford?
I also, I don't wanna be a pain, but it says seven and then in parentheses four.
Oh, I just saw.
Not less than seven slash.
Want me to change that? Want me to change that? I'll change that right now.
Yeah.
I could change it, Tom, and then I'll.
And change the spelling of forty.
Yeah, I mean.
Apparently I can't do that. I don't know how to do that because it's in notes.
No, you can just, it's in track changes, but you can just delete the, the U, it'll be fine. Or, oh, you can't.
I can't, I, I'm gonna.
Don't worry, Dan, I'll take care of it.
Ran into that when I tried to bring it into the clean document. I had to just retype it all.
Alright, yeah, no, I, I am, if there's one thing I'm good at, it's Microsoft Office Suite.
Well, you know, then therefore, you're gonna look at this, Tom, sorry, you shouldn't have.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Great way to spend my vacation. Um, yeah, cool. Uh, let's see, what's next?
We, we cut this word, was filled, this was our cut at the committee level. And he just regularly scheduled. We were trying to, as I recall, clarify the timing of when something's presented. Not when it's stamped by the clerk two weeks before the council meeting, but when it was presented at the council. That's when the forty-five days would begin. Am I right here, Tom?
Right, because there were cases where, I think there was a case where like a meeting got postponed because of a storm and totally, or there was some sort of paperwork issue or something, and so like it actually, you know, or beyond any of that, like, the whole idea is that like, the, it was these appoint, these appointments are made, and it could be up to two weeks la- later that it actually reaches the city council, which provides for a very difficult turnaround, especially if it's the summer and you're only having one meeting, or if a meeting gets canceled, or if there's any questions from the committee to an applicant. So the idea is that, if, that, that we want the timeline to start basically when the, we want the timeline to start at the meeting where the appointment gets read, uh, in and moved to appointments.
We added this language here, which is big change for department heads, so a council couldn't, so the city could function with a new department head without having a temporary in there for a long time. Um. It carves out an exception for department heads, is basically what we're doing. Uh, we did that. Mayor, I, I, as I recall, you were okay with that. This one?
I think she said she's okay.
Yes, I am. Nope, yes.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Because that, that, it's, it's about efficiency in government. And we try, all these rationales try to explain the committee's opinion on that.
Hold on, Mark has a, Mark has a co- a comment here where he says, I believe this entire provision needs to be reworked. The appointment becomes effective forty-five days after presented at the council meeting.
I interpreted that as why he put in these words. He added this language.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong.
But, well, the thing is that he also says that to keep the, the language consistent. He has a, a thing above saying to keep the languages consistent, and then at the end of the paragraph, he says, I believe this entire provision needs to be reworked.
Well, I don't know. Well, I think it is as it is, and if he, he rejects it, then, but I.
He doesn't have the authority to reject it.
No, he, he's saying that, but I like our language, frankly. And I thought he was appointing at the word effective.
Uh, Counselor Conis.
What, the intent of what he's saying is that when we start talking about a department head, this provision right here is saying that, that it's different than a diff, than another appointment. Any other appointment has forty-five days, but a department head, we have to, on the next, after we read it in, the next regularly scheduled meeting, we have to do something with it, or it becomes effective. And that could be way less than forty-five days.
I think it referred to two meetings in the summer, because we only have, we have, we have a June meeting, and then we have a July meeting normally, so that would allow us.
And why, why wouldn't that also be true of a regular appointment?
It did. We, we changed it from thirty to forty-five to cover for that, because it used to be thirty in the year. In the two thousand and ten change, we changed it to forty-five days, so, I don't know. As I recall, we felt we needed to do this.
Yeah, um, geez. Well, or at least it was something that, um, that the mayor felt would, would really help to streamline things when there was a department that really needed a department head quickly, which I really sympathize with. I'm just not sure how to respond to this comment from uh, Attorney Tanner, that he believes this entire provision needs to be reworked. Do you think this is, if, if he thinks this entire provision needs to be reworked, is this maybe a thing that we need to send back to a charter review committee to rework? I mean, I hate to do that, because I think.
I think there's confusion as to what he means. I'd like to.
I find it that confusing, so I'm not sure why you're confused. We have two things that we're talking about. A mayoral appointment, and if we don't do anything within forty-five days, then it goes into effect. Then we're talking about a department head, and we don't have that language in there about, um, forty-five days to reject said appointment. We just have at the next regularly scheduled meeting. I think what he's saying is the wording should be consistent, otherwise the department head appointment is a carve-out, and it's a different kind of an appointment. And if that's what we're saying, then that's what we're saying, but I thought we were just trying to be consistent with, if in forty-five days we don't act on it, they're in. If we don't reject them, then they're in, but it doesn't speak to that the way the language is right now. It's all I think he's trying to get at.
I agree, Peg.
Yeah.
What do we want to do with this, to not make the change or send it back to him? I don't know.
No, no, everything doesn't go back to Mark. I mean, he's made his statement, and I think maybe just add a sentence if that was the intent of the charter committee after this that says, unless the city council shall within said forty-five days vote to reject such appointment, or unless the city council has sooner voted to affirm the appointment. Like, just throw that in there, because the way you have it worded, it's like we have to vote on it in the next regularly scheduled meeting, or if we don't, then that's the only timeline we have, so if we don't vote on it, they're in. And that could be more or less than forty-five days, depending upon.
It would always be.
You never really go forty-five days without a meeting.
No, and I think the point of this was not to let it go on for forty-five days. It could be two weeks.
Well, then why, I, then why do we have that wording in there above?
That's for other appointments, and that's what would happen to department heads. This was to try and speed up the process for department heads when we could go two, three weeks, two meetings, which is in order to get, uh, twenty, like, let's see, that's, uh, twenty-one days or something, or whatever, to get a department head approved, it has to be approved in, within two weeks, uh, to keep, keep the government working better.
Right, but what about in the summer, when we don't meet except once a month?
But that's thirty days, so that's still less than forty-five.
Oh, we're not even saying forty-five days comes into play for a depart, it's not, nowhere do we talk about forty-five days for a department head.
Right, but that's the point. We don't want, we want department heads approved sooner. The mayor has her hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Mayor O'Shea.
Um, yeah, I, I, I mean, this, the, the other, I mean, I, I did push for this. Um, the other possibility is that it comes up, it's presented at a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, and it's referred to the appointment subcommittee, and the subcommittee, um, says, no, we're gonna sit on this, uh, because they don't like what I gave them, which remember, under charter, is just the name and, and address and a phone number. I mean, I understand, Peg, you, you and I have gone back and forth on, on that, and there's a, a common agreement, but, you know, going forward, if, my question is, if it doesn't come back to city council, I think it's very possible that it could sit in committee and get lost.
But only for forty-five days. This gives you two weeks.
Well, I.
I don't think he's saying that.
Huh?
No, I don't think he's saying that either.
Oh.
My, my apologies, Chairman Peake, for, for talking out of order.
No, it's, I mean, there's only six of us. Um, uh, I think, uh, I, you know, when I'm looking at this, what I think it's, sorry, I don't know if my brain is just broken or what, like, I, I'm, I'm not actually sure. Like, to me, this says what it says. I mean, you can like it or not. Um, but what it says is, if, you know, if you have a, you know, the normal timeline for a appointment is forty-five days, you gotta act on it or it's effective. The timeline for a department head is the next meeting, which is, there's never a point in our regularly scheduled calendar where the next meeting is more than forty-five days away, so it's less time. The idea is that you have, you have the time you have, that's either two weeks or four weeks usually, I guess it could be five weeks, to vet that appointment and take some action. You can reject the appointment, but you have to take some action at the next meeting if it's a department head, and that forty-five days.
Doesn't apply.
Doesn't apply.
Right. And that's, so I don't, I don't personally, I mean, like, if you wanted to say that, you know, if you wanted to be someone on the appointments committee and say that you have a, a, a problem with that in terms of process, then fine, but like, I don't, I don't understand where there's any sort of like ambiguity or contradiction, like.
And I think to the point of whether, if the appointments committee does not get the information it needs to approve a department head, they can just say, no, we're not gonna approve this because we didn't get it. And that would be pressure on the mayor to present that, resumes and everything. I doubt a mayor would ever do that, though, but.
Alright, then let's.
The point, the point I'm trying to make is, let's, let's get the government efficiently done.
I don't, I don't feel passionately enough about this to retool it, so we'll keep going.
Alright.
I mean, if the, if, we can always amend it later, it's just a big pain.
Alright.
Alright. So.
Well, he was worried about, should we say this, when we, ranked choice voting, yes, we will have to change it. A precinct councillor is a precinct councillor, it's no longer a district councillor.
And so I guess actually, process-wise, there's actually an important thing here, where I think when we bring this to the full council or here in this committee, at some point, we have to make, like, this, so this is gonna get turned into a, like, this right now is a working document. It's gonna get, have to get turned into a legislative petition, right, which we actually vote on to send to, like, the, what we sent to the, uh, what we sent to the, uh, legislature last year wasn't like a tracked changed word document, it was a legislative petition saying, here's the specific amendments, this language in this paragraph is gonna get changed to this language in this paragraph. So what one of us will have to do is to actually make a motion to amend that legislative petition to include the same thing in the, right, like, in.
No, I think you're, Tom, let me clarify.
We can just make a single, we can, we can just say, no, I actually disagree with what I just said, because we can just.
Look at my clean version. I incorporated the ranked choice voting and mayor term in that document.
I agree, but what I'm saying is that.
When we send the document.
One at a time, guys, please.
When we send the document.
Saying is that when.
Have to change that.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that when the charter review committee voted on these changes, that was not charter language. It didn't exist in our charter at the time.
Mm-hmm.
September, so in order for this to like legally work, one of us will just have to make a motion to say, and I think it could really be as simple as to say that, that one of the things just we're globally changing our current charter where it says district to say precinct, right? So at that, it's good, but just for what it's worth, like, like, we, we can't just like slap new language that didn't exist at the time that this vote was taken onto this document. We'll need to make sure that whatever the legislative petition says just works there, but again, I don't think it's a problem because I think that can just be a sentence that just says in the charter where it says district, it should now say precinct, and that should cover the new language that's come on board since this vote was taken. Does anyone disagree with that?
No, absolutely, and just to clarify, the city council has ultimate authority. The charter review committee is a special committee of the, so if we wanted to, we don't want to, but if we wanted to make new changes here, we can do that. We don't need a charter review committee to do that. But in this case, we wanna be clear, when we did this, we didn't have a vote on district councillor, so now we have the ranked choice voting. When we send it, that global change will include that, and I believe I used the current charter, which includes those new changes voted by the voters. Look at that clean document, the one that you might take and edit for me would also, also, I think I did that. I think I did precinct.
Okay.
For that, so, anyway. So, we're moving on. This was you, wasn't it, uh, filling a vacancies?
The council presidential call for special meeting, um.
Some of this language was his.
Uh. Yeah, I'm, sorry, blast from the past, uh. So, yeah, they were saying, yeah, that, so this is the big one, is that I was just saying, um, that, that when there's a case where we need to fill a vacancy, that we should call a special meeting to do so, rather than have that be sort of in your regular council business, just because that could itself be kind of a, a process, especially if there's multiple people wanting different people to take that position. I don't know if that'll ever actually happen, but it did happen once at the school committee, and so that was just, that was my recommendation. Um.
And we all agreed to that, and the city attorney had some changes in here.
Okay, so he wanted to put a, a timeline within thirty days of such vacancy. I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone have a problem with that?
Makes sense.
Would we?
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
If we had a vacancy, would we have an applicant within thirty days? Is that a reasonable amount of time to assume that we will have a city council, uh, councillor chosen in thirty days? That seems like a really short amount of time. Um. Unless, unless we literally take, unless, well, assuming more than people ran than got voted in, we could take the next vote getter, but I don't, this feels like that's just not a lot of time, but.
But, but that's actually, this is for C, this is, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Peg.
No, that's it, I'm done.
Uh, th- this is for a vacancy, well, like, that's our general thing, is like, if there was a runner-up, then the runner-up usually.
This is if two eleven A or B doesn't apply. If we can't fill it in the normal way, this is how you're supposed to fill it.
No, I get that.
Okay, so then.
I could just question whether thirty days is enough to get an individual who doesn't, who hasn't run before and is not part of the former election in that space in thirty days.
That's, I think, a valid que, do you wanna make it sixty?
Sixty feels better.
This was him, right? We didn't do this, right?
Right, no, I got it.
He, he said, do you want some timeframe and, um.
He threw that in there as a.
Or, I mean, do we even, maybe we, do we need it? Like, I, I guess we should have it, right? Like, we should have, maybe we should have some timeframe. I think it's a reasonable point, but, uh, I haven't really thought about it too hard.
I think sixty days is more practical, as Peg is saying, and I think the city attorney is just throwing it in there as thirty day, as, as a suggestion. He's not saying it should be thirty.
Yeah, no.
So, Tom, can you make a note to change that to sixty? I, I, maybe I can do it, but.
Yeah, can you just write sixty next, but, yeah.
I put it there.
There, I'll know what that means. Okay, um.
I don't know.
That's fine, Dan, I'll, I'll, I'll.
If you can make a note, because when I send it to you, you should go over all of this, and you'll remember it. You have a better mind than me, you're younger.
Well, it's on recording, so.
Oh, there you go.
I mean, one question, can you scroll up, though, because he had some other edits, I just wanna go. I just wanna go over these.
In here?
Yep. Um, okay, so that's just legalese, position, this, okay, whatever, yeah, elected.
What is that underline O? Original unexpired term? I don't know what that is there.
That looks-
Here, here, or if I put my cursor here, you can see what he wrote, or if the term has expired.
Okay.
Tom, did I send you this in Word, in Word form?
Some time ago, I believe. Well, I don't know, I think I might've just gotten the PDF, so I-
I'm gonna send this in Word form, but know that every time I send it, sometimes it gets formatted all crazy.
Yeah, well, let's talk about that offline and we can figure out how to get that away, that the format-
Anyway, if you look, it, it looks like if you put your cursor there, you can see what he was really typing.
Um-
Anything else, Tom, on this?
So, yeah, no, it looks like that's all just sort of grammar. Um, so that's fine.
Alright. Moving on to the executive branch.
I'll just go just a time check at six fifteen.
Well, we were gonna go to seven, right?
Just, just throwing it out there, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to just go to seven, and we'll just have to have another meeting. This is, and, and just a comment, this is important language checks, and I think Peg's eyes on this are really important, and having Omar and Tom and Sarah here, we, we gotta do it right.
Right, agreed.
And he changed this, election in which the mayor is elected.
Yep.
This is interesting, because this change, no ordinance increasing the salary of a mayor shall be effective unless it has been adopted. In the first twelve months of the term for the young councilors are elected, it provides such salaries become effective January of the year following the election in which the mayor is elected. So I can't do what I wanted to do, Mayor.
Well, excuse me, Dan, can we not talk about that? But right now, I wanna clarify what this sentence means. Um, that, so, if you're a city, how does this read? So, no ordinance increasing the salary of a mayor shall be adopted. So, in the first twelve months of the term for which the councilors are elected, is, oh, that's presuming, cause it'll be a four-year term and councilors are elected every two years. Okay. Uh, and it provides such salaries to become effective in January of the year following the election in, okay, so, because the election is next year, any changes to salary would have to be signed off in this calendar year, cause the election's next year, and then it would go into effect the following January. Okay, got it.
It's what we've done, that's why the stipend review, the stipend and salary review is always done at the beginning of a term.
Yep.
We have twelve months to do it. Anyway, uh, okay, he just made that change. We didn't make any, we didn't make any executive power decisions here. We added the word ordinance, because ordinance is a possible to-
To make a multi-member body.
To make a multi-member body.
And we've done that twice, I think, last term, so.
Okay. We didn't make any, this is a big thing here, where we cut this line because it was inconsistent with what the council's authority is. It seemed to suggest that we have the ability to disapprove of the action of the mayor to, um, remove, say, a department head, when we really don't have that power.
Well, it never made it clear what happens if we disapprove.
Right. And so we just took it out because-
Yeah.
The mayor has that authority, and we didn't want to add authority to the legislative body to be able to override the mayor's decision. We didn't want to do that. So that's why we took this language out. And I don't know what he's saying here.
Well, if this is something, I think what he's saying, he's saying removal of this provision takes away pretty significant due process type rights of appointees.
I remember our conversation around this as being, um, that, like, if you look larger, the, the, um, you know, say, the president appoints a secretary of education, the senate will confirm or deny that, but they can't say, um, that, but then if the president wants to fire him, the senate says, no, you can't fire him. They don't do that, right?
Right.
As an executive power, that doesn't seem to have a, a, an analog in larger, um, bodies.
And, and it was just inconsistent. I mean, like, if, 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 I think, if somebody felt that we really wanted to build in a process for how to-
Unfire somebody?
From, like, yeah, or block somebody from being fired by a mayor, that's a conversation we could have, but the language that we had was inconsistent and confusing, and had never been used, and it just seemed like, um, it wasn't, like, it seemed like the, the simplest way to deal with it, that was consistent from, with what we had seen elsewhere in the charter, was to, to get rid of it. I, I understand, like, I, I get what he's saying, I just don't know, like-
Here's, here's, here's important language, I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I don't agree with his due process comment, because up here, we still keep the language in where the city officer can appear before the council. If the permission for the said city officer, member, multi-member body, or head of department head meeting the city council is granted for such purpose, the mayor shall attend the same mini, meeting, uh, read the statement of removal of suspension of the mayor in the first instance. The city council should have the authority to vote to disapprove of the action of the mayor, but it shall no, have no other power to otherwise express its views concerning such removal or suspension. We can say we don't like it, but we can't block it. And this suggests that we have the ability to block it. That's the inconsistency, as I recall. That makes-
And so either what we would've needed to do is take out that language and insert an entire new process that explains how we block it, or take out the language suggesting vaguely that maybe we could block it.
It, it refers to my hope that we can remove some ambiguity in the charter. This is ambiguous. This suggests that the city council has authority, which it doesn't.
Yeah.
That's why we removed it.
So we have no, so, although it's in the charter, we have no authority to, uh, disapprove the action of the mayor. So disapproving of it doesn't mean it, it's just like, we don't agree?
Well, right up here, it says, but it shall have no other power to otherwise express its views concerning such removal of expression.
Okay.
And, and maybe that's suggesting that we could, but I don't, I don't see that. We debated this a while, and we thought we didn't have that ability.
Okay.
So that's why we got rid of it.
Alright.
I mean, unless-
And frankly, I think we also related to the fact, Tom, I'm sorry, I keep interrupting. Um, this is a mayor central charter, that mayor has authority over department heads. We can voice a lot of disapproval, but it's the mayor's department head, and the mayor has the, the power to remove a department head should they desire to do so. And we would have to go back into the charter, make, make-
And this goes farther than just a department head. This is a member of a multi-body committee, this is a city officer, this is more than just a department head. The mayor could effectively remove someone from a committee.
A committee she appoints, or?
It doesn't say that. The first sentence just says, the mayor may in writing, remove or suspend any city officer, member of a multi-member body, or the head of any city depart-, oh, appointed by the mayor. So yes, one she has appointed.
Right.
And that's, that's always been my understanding, is that mayoral appointments serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
Exactly. And we didn't wanna make, we didn't wanna have a council, you know, some future mayor council disagreement, you know, if they get really heated, that they would have this back and forth about trying to protect a department head, who's just not-
No, I understand. Here's my, I'm just gonna say it, and then we're not gonna talk about it anymore. I don't understand the relationship between asking the city council to approve a mayoral appointment, and then saying, we have no authority after that. So if, if the appointments serve at the pleasure of the mayor, why do we have to approve them?
I think this is something that the next Charter Review Committee can govern.
I mean, we, we either have a certain level of authority over mayoral appointments, and, and, and I would argue that maybe we should have that authority at the beginning and the end, but that's a whole other conversation. I'm just confused as to why we have it on the one end, but not the other. But I agree, it's a whole separate conversation for a different charter review, and let's just-
And you should know that the same things you just brought up were brought up by members at, we had a long-
Alright, well, we're not gonna read adjudicated, let's just keep going.
Let's keep going. Mayor, uh, this is about you, so, you have any-
I would, right, so this is something, right, if, if you're gonna add another legislative movement on mayoral appointments, then I, I think there are two concerns. There's one, that there's some level of adjudication, which a legislative body does not have, and also given, uh, labor laws, as well as personnel laws and policies, then that would also mean, um, there's a level of confidentiality and privacy that both, that could affect legislation, I mean, I'm sorry, um, litigation on, on both parties. I mean, that, that's just asking for something to come back at the council and, uh, on the city. I mean, I think the approval by city council is to make sure or consider and take a look at, um, qualifications, and, um, you know, look if, uh, you know, a mayor appoints a relative, sort of thing. Um, that makes complete sense to me, but somebody's job performance, or the reason why they're not employed by the city at some point, I, I just don't see why the city council should be involved in that.
It does give, it does, the language does give the person the right to go out and express their issues, but that's it. And I agree with the mayor there.
That would be, that would be the person's choice. That wouldn't be the city council crying about their employment history in public.
Okay, I'm convinced.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, those are very good points.
Thank you.
Uh, here's something here, uh, need to look at this entire section, it's been a recurrent problem with filling vacancies. He was writing this at the time, there was some confusion over the mayor's ability to point a temporary person to the Board of Public Works. He said, maybe we should look at this. My comment was, we need a lot of new language, but I think that's another charter review, and I didn't wanna go there right now.
I think that's right. I think that if we form-
I don't wanna do it now.
Well, I think if we form another charter review, then maybe that's something that we specifically say, like, hey, we made some changes last time, but this has continued to be a topic where there's been some conversations, and we'd like you guys to make, to like, really specifically look at this.
And, and I think the ambiguity of what authority the mayor has, although I thought Mark delineated it appropriately, clear it up, so somebody who doesn't like somebody can't bring up the charter and say, look, it says this in the charter, and we have to rely on the city attorney's interpretation. So I'm hopeful that the next committee will deal with that.
Right, but they're not gonna touch it right now, and the-
No, I, I don't think we should do major changes now. No. We have the authority, but I don't think we should. So, add lan-, language for this whole-
Now, that's all for another time.
I don't wanna change any of this language.
You guys didn't touch this, we shouldn't touch it.
We made a change, instead of thirty days to forty-five, this is a committee change, temporary for the forty-five day.
No, I mean, yeah, if somebody, if, if a counselor wants to offer an amendment when we bring this to the full council, it's their right to do so. But I'm not in this committee interested in necessarily handling that stuff.
My comment at that time would be, I think such an amendment would require, if it's passed, go back to the city attorney and all that.
Yeah.
Mayor can time up, I won't approve it, so we could stop it, but let's not go there now. I think it's a, it's a reject or not reject, or approve. Um, communications for special meetings, here we used our electronic communication, and he added some language here. He, he changed this language a committee was opposing to this language, such notice in meeting shall-
In case the open meeting law changes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yep.
That makes sense.
Okay, we're moving on.
Look at that, we went two whole pages, with no changes.
You're happy about that, right?
We're smoking along here now.
Just so everybody knows, we asked the former chair of the school committee to give us some ideas. A lot of these changes came from her, that was Deb Luznia. Uh, Mayor, you're on the school committee, I'm assuming you read all these changes and you felt comfortable with them, cause they deal with appointments to this, all of these things were cut, and we added this.
Yeah, I, mhm.
So we added, we, we tried to keep, make this a little better to what they actually do, the superintendent of schools. And this, this, this number three was added, again, to be consistent with what they do. And he added, this is Mark's language here, appropriate council, which I was fine with. He added a number four, in conjunction with the superintendent of schools. He, he cut the word system, and he just changed this.
Mhm.
All of these changes, where it has five A, five B, these are Mark's changes. He just changed the formatting. I'm gonna keep going unless somebody has a question.
No, I mean, none of that seems to change the intent, sort of cleaning up-
This was important, because this had to do with district unionized employees. He changed this, six-
To just make-
School committee. I don't understand it, though.
It looks like he's just making it a numbered item, like, that was already in there. He's just taking that and making it a numbered item in this list.
Okay. Moving on. We changed this to eighteen months, to filling of vacancies? He didn't have a problem with that, and I assume, Mayor, you have no problem with that, so, moving on. Um, Deb thought we should change the word president to chairperson, cause that's what they were doing now. That's where all this came from.
That's fine.
The budget is done. We're on Article Five, Peg, we're moving. He changed this to publication. Again, he wanted, he cha-, he, he, he went back to change the word publication to make it, I think, Tom, consistent with what definitions he had changed, right?
That makes sense to me.
Uh, here's something, uh, we just ran into this, sixty days, we added. So, the mayor can't put in a budget that's less than sixty days before the July first. Mayor, how do you feel about that? It gives the council time to look at it.
Um, I don't think it's practical. I mean, I, I think about, I, I just think about this year, I think, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that the budget schedule is, is printed and well-known, and I think it, you know, sixty days, it, it's tough. I mean, I, yeah.
So we should do sixty days?
I, I don't think so.
What was it before? That's- I have to go back to the original document.
Yeah, I mean, and doesn't state law come into play here somewhere? Like, or, or are we? I, I, this year, if we had this in, this year, we would not have, we, the mayor would have violated it, because she submitted the budget on May sixth, I think.
Right, and it needed sixty days. And it needed, by, by state law, we had until May fifteenth. I mean, that was extended, I think, a little bit because of the pandemic, but, um-
So is it forty-five right now?
I'm, I'm trying to find it, I-
Yeah, I mean, if May fifteenth is the end, then it's forty-five.
I'm getting into the charter.
Why wouldn't we just go with what state law is? Why wouldn't we just go with what state law is?
If you would want more time to consider.
What, Sarah, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Should you, does that, I think it's one of those things that you like can't, you know how you can go beyond, you can be more stringent.
You can be more restrictive, yes. You can't be more.
There was no time, the current charter has no timeline at all. I just read it.
Oh, so we put that timeline in.
So we could eliminate that, we could not make any changes. But that's what you're saying, Mayor, yeah.
I I I mean, I I'm just, you know, I don't, I don't remember the conversation around this in the committee. I I just feel like I have to say again, like to to the 60 day or or this particular change and to change what we submitted to the attorney, like I feel like we're subverting the work of the charter committee and the sentiment. Like we were, you know, like you're the, you know, this committee is going to vote on a document that was reviewed by the charter committee and edited and and other than de minimis changes, it should go to the council for a vote. And I don't know, for for some, I mean, this change means a lot to me. I don't think it's fair to future mayors. And and look at what.
I have to interrupt you, Mayor. I have to interrupt you because you have equal authority here. If you don't like it, it should, it doesn't happen. I mean, you, I I I appreciate that you're respecting what the Charter Review Committee did, but this year's, this year's budget process is an example of where this may not work. And what you're saying is, I don't like it, and that's your right as mayor, then it can't happen. If there's any charter change, has to be approved by the mayor. And if you don't feel it's, you're comfortable with it, then it doesn't happen. I I know, for instance, we changed, when we got to Board of Public Works, we talked about five hours and we thought that was bad, so we went back to three. You have that authority and I appreciate you respect it, but you've got good reasons here not to change this.
Okay.
I think we just leave it. Uh, Tom, hey, that's a.
Councillor caught a few of your hand up.
Um, so this, within the time fixed by law, but in no event fewer than 60 days, was the language that the charter committee chose, is what you're saying.
Well, the language that we chose was.
Dan, Dan.
Sorry.
The was within the time fixed by laws and at least 60 days before the start of. So we added the and at least 60 days.
Okay.
And he changed it to, but in no event fewer than 60 days, which I guess is better legally, um, but, um, no, I mean, it like, you know, it it is what it is, you know, there's the the reality is that we, you know, I my understanding is that we can't override a veto on a legislative petition, so if there's something that isn't going to work with your office, like, and just say that and we'll, you know, drop it. And if it's something that the next Charter Review Committee wants to take up, we can have a, we can have a conversation about that.
I think that's fair, exactly. We can keep the electronic publication part, but this change should not occur if the mayor's uncomfortable with it. Mayor, you're okay? We, I'm I'm certainly fine with not making that change.
Yeah, I I I, yes, and and if there was a disagreement about that change with this committee, I I say now, I would veto it.
Then Tom.
Let's get rid of it.
Let's get, get it. So, Tom, when you go back in, look at the origin, the charter as it is now and just keep the same language, except I think we should do this, electronic publication.
I agree, that makes sense.
Okay, hey, this is good. All right, uh, this part of the language of free cash, I think you remember, Mayor, we said, we don't do this, we don't estimate free cash and surplus revenue because we don't know it until the fall. And we don't know why it was in the charter, so we cut it. Even though Mark doesn't know why, I I tried to explain it when I said here to Mark, so. We're okay deleting this, Mayor? It's your budget.
Yes.
It just, to me, there's an expectation that the budget should show, oh, we estimate that our free cash is this. When you presented in July, oh, June, you don't know that.
No.
As I say here, codifies it. He has comments about the special committee.
So I think that the only place where we would do that, all that we're doing there, because it was just said, uh, we 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 made it to just say a standing or special committee so that if there were a case where, it it's just frees up, because other, you know, it doesn't have to go to a particular standing committee, like if there were a case where finance was absolutely slammed with a million, uh, say with with another big union contract or something like that, and and we just made more sense to create a special budget committee to handle the budget this particular year. Or if, say, like, the finance, uh, a couple members of the finance committee were, got got sick or something, I don't know, that it would be like, we'd be able to say, all right, we're going to create a special committee. So.
I think we should keep it, even though he's questioning it.
It's something that we actually have put in pretty, like, throughout this document, there's a few places where it said a standing committee, and we changed that to be a standing or special committee to just give the council a little bit of flexibility in where the workload of one committee was just not ready to accommodate like a huge task.
So going down, when we added this, he changed this to membership. I have no problem with that change. This is a big change. The committee, the Charter Review Committee, changed it from 90 to 60. So that we didn't, we wanted to keep it consistent with 60 days stated later in the section. I I guess that's okay. I don't.
Well, this actually could be an issue. So the reason we said 60 here was because above we had said, the mayor has to submit it 60 days before the end of the fiscal year, right? So then saying that we're going to have this, um, that the council needs to adopt the budget within 60 days was an efficient, efficient way of saying before the end of the fiscal year. If the budget has to be submitted 45 days before the end of the fiscal year, does that mean that the council could wait until 15 days into the next fiscal year to take that?
We don't have a date, we don't have any, we've cut that, we don't have a timeout.
Yes, we cut that, and how does that change this?
We did, I think the reason we did this, well, maybe we did 60 like you're saying.
That's what I remember.
I mean, the the budget, my budget would go into effect by state law. I mean, you can't start a fiscal year, like, we have to have a, the municipality has to have a a balanced budget to start the fiscal year. I I don't know. What?
We're not the state.
No, but but I'm saying, right, we're not the state, but but as far as. I mean, the, we are not allowed to to start a fiscal year without a balanced budget.
So.
And that's one of the reasons why, if you had cut or made an amendment, right, I would need to rebalance the budget.
Right, and so.
I wonder why 90 days was thought of by the original makers of the charter, because that's really long. If we did 60, it almost should say, must be approved by July 1st of the new fiscal year. That's what it should say.
I agree.
By state law, correct?
And so this might be a case where I actually might be, though I said, like, let's not amend anything, but this might be a case where, in light of like, our current understandings of how this all works, like, this language might be the previous language and language that suggested might be like, not really in compliance with how budgets work in Massachusetts, and maybe, maybe that does call for an actual amendment. I don't necessarily get through this whole thing in the next 20 minutes, so that's something that maybe we can chew on before we meet again, if that's cool with everybody.
Yeah.
But, uh.
I don't know why we wouldn't follow the state law for how a municipality does their budget and when they have to have the budget ready and done. Why would we override that?
Let me, let me, let me see why this is here. I found, I figured it out. Look down here, this is the charter language. With respect to any item opposed budget within 60 days following the date of its respite by the budget. It says 60 days here, so we wanted to make this 60 days. That's why we changed it.
Yeah, but either way, they don't make sense.
Okay, but I'm just telling you why the committee did it.
Right.
So the reason this is 60 is because this is 60.
I think it should say June 30th of whatever year.
We have the right to make that change. We could change, let's chew on that, Tom, and maybe you can come up with, when it says June, because we have the right to make these amendments if the mayor is in agreement, but by saying June 30th, that's consistent with state law that by July 1st, we have to have a budget, right?
Right.
To have it by July 1st.
And like, I don't feel like in doing that, we are necessarily like overriding the will of the committee, like, I think if they, I think if, if, I think if we all understood right now, you know, like, what was understood then, this, we probably would have done this differently, so.
I think it's a technical understanding issue, not a.
Yeah.
And again, I think the only reason this was changed is because this says 60. Why would this be 90?
We'll chew on it, Ben.
All right, let's chew on it. Going further. We changed the city agency to be consistent with definitions. And he wants the correct term used here by electronic publication. End of department transfers. I was wrong about the two thirds vote to not require. So that's why it's cut by the city attorney. I originally thought we should put in the charter what we've been doing. Everybody, you remember that, Tom?
Yes, I mean, it's all coming back to me now. It was.
Been a while.
Yeah.
So all of this was to try and clear, clean that up.
And, okay, so that's new information, so that's maybe something else that we need to think about, like, in light of that, does that still make sense?
Well, he's saying we should change it.
No, he's not.
No, he's not.
No, he's saying, he's asking if two thirds is what the MGL says.
Oh, right. I'm pretty sure it says majority vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, uh.
So then maybe that's something that we.
Well, the current charter says majority vote. I don't think we should change it, unless we have knowledge that it should.
So our logic, our rationale for changing this in the first place was to be in accordance with MGL, and we're now saying that that's not actually what MGL says?
I think so, I got to look it up. Well, this is what he's, he crossed this out. How did I get that?
Oh, yeah.
The charter charter says a majority vote. So we were going to change it, but if MGL says no, we can't do it. But he's not saying that, he's just saying it is an increase, a change.
Just beware.
Yeah.
And be consistent with the MGL.
Okay. Moving on, we made, this is committee changes here. He added this language, but we removed this. We don't have anything in our rules regarding this. We wanted to keep it with the charter, as I recall. All right, Tom?
Um. Yeah, um.
Reading down here, the charter does not leave room for council rule change, which might reduce the transparency we have to expect, allows for public hearings when transfers occur between departments of different functions. This rationale explains why we were doing it. Oh, this, I'm going to move on, is that all right?
Sure.
Mayor, as you recall, this whole change here, which we deleted, was something Melissa wanted, and maybe.
Yeah.
But we don't want to do it now because it creates confusion. We we never had a problem with end of year appropriations in the past. So we were thinking we'd add this, this was my idea. Actually, I did it because Melissa had asked for it.
Yeah.
And you agree we don't need it now, right?
I agree.
Okay, so, Tom.
I mean, yeah, I mean.
They cut this, the mayor, the mayor is saying we don't need it, and Mark is saying we we don't need it.
That's, yeah, I mean, that language was something they had specifically come and it seemed important to the finance team at the time, um, but if there's not a desire for it among the current finance team, then I don't see any reason for it to.
I think it adds a layer of confusion.
Mm hmm.
That frankly, we didn't have a problem with it in the past.
Okay, I I would be fine with Mark.
This is cutting something that the Charter Review Committee had voted to prove, but I think it's worth cutting.
And I also think it's worth mentioning, if we're talking about the spirit of the committee, that that was language brought to us basically in its entirety by a department. So it's not like this was somebody on the committee.
Yeah.
It'd be a really great idea, this, so it's, you know, if we're, if the, like, the administration asked for it, if the administration's now saying they don't want it, then I I never felt strongly about it. I don't think anybody else on the committee did either.
Well, as I recall, I was saying, let's do it for their sake because they're they're the ones living the finances day to day. But I also pointed out over my many years on the council, we didn't seem to have a problem with this.
I agree with that recollection.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
About appropriations. He added this language. We were only going with some electronic publication. He added, receive the advice of a standing professional. I don't have a problem with it. He he changed this language to, he just basically did some language changes for clarity. Do we agree with his changes?
Yeah, I'm just processing them. Received the advice and recommendation of the standing. Okay, so it's basically saying that we think it won't be adopted until the council committee reports out, which, um, seems self evident to me, but if having that language in there makes that more clear, then sure.
Okay. Here's something, I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm a little confused. Capital Improvement Program, Mark says this is your request, 90 days instead of 150 days. Doesn't 150 days give you more time to get that done, but you wanted 90 days?
Yeah, I mean, it's an ongoing part of our budget process, and I think too, I I mean, I, again, I'll I'll just go back to this year and what I foresee happening in the next couple of years, that plan just changes wildly and and it can do it. So 90 days, doing it 150, I mean, even though it's a fluid document, I I think that 90 days you're, I'm presenting, the mayor's presenting a document that is more true to the needs of of the city, um, rather than, you know, doing 150 and then coming back, you know, in 60 days, in two months.
Or you talk for 90.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a once, you know, you don't, we don't look at the capital improvement plan just at, you know, 150 days. I mean, there weren't, you know, with the capital improvement plan, we, we had this year, and the budget came through from the states away, there were no changes.
Right, you're just looking at what you submitted the year before and deleting and adding to it.
Yeah, and, and if we thought we were gonna spend free cash on something, but we got a grant, we changed the source.
Okay.
So, I have no problem with this, but if you don't mind, I, just as a sort of process thing, this is something I don't recall us discussing, this is something that, that is a request that came after the process, is that, do I understand that correctly?
It sounds like it happened when the mayor met with the, with the city attorney.
Right, that's just what I'm seeing from this note.
No?
Discuss this in the course of the Charter Review Committee?
I don't think we did.
Okay, so I'm completely fine with that, but my one thought is, with, can, can I just throw this out there? And if you guys disagree, then totally fine, just brainstorming here. With things that weren't the, like, new things, that weren't the entire of the committee, if there's a great thing that we should be adding right now, then that's fine. But let's do that, like, let, let's, let's submit the document as, like, the committee's recommendations minus the things that we just shouldn't or can't do. And then, if we want to amend it, let's amend it at that time, but let's, let's present the document as, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I would say, I, I don't remember this, I, I, I'm not saying it didn't happen. I, I just, I, I don't remember making a change here, or why we would do it outside of the committee. And, and if that's the case, we have any question that it was made by me after, when I sat down with the, the attorney, then it shouldn't be considered. I mean, I wouldn't want a change requested by me that the, the, the committee didn't hear.
And the other thing I have to say, Tom, is the council has authority to make amendments.
The council does.
And we just dropped a whole section right here.
Right.
The Charter Review Committee had died. I think we have to give deference to the mayor, who's an equal player here, and I think it's okay with the council, and this is minor, it's not a major change, if it was a major change, the council could say, well, we're not gonna deal with that now, like the temporary appointments. But in this case, I don't see a problem with making these small amendments, because the mayor has that authority to request them, we have the authority to reject it, of course.
Right, and all I'm saying, Dan, is that we, I, I'm not saying I'm against doing this, I have no problem with it. What I'm saying is that we should present to the council the docu, the recommendations that were made by the Charter Review Committee, minus the ones that got dropped, for whatever reason, if at that point, the mayor or any city councillor wants to suggest any further changes, whether that's dropping some of those recommendations, or whether that's saying, oh, hey, there was something else that came up in the meantime, and let's do this now, because it's not, it's minor enough that it doesn't necessarily deserve, like, a whole Charter Review Committee process of its own, like, changing a number from 100.
Yeah.
Then, just have them make, I'll, I'll make that motion to, to amend, but I just want the council to understand what the product coming out of the committee is, and then if we want to amend it, then we can do that.
I agree, Counselor Peg.
I don't disagree to the extent that, what you're saying, Tom, but I think the Rules Committee can recommend the change, and then have the council deal with it as a change beyond what the Charter Review Committee made.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Longer, so we're making amendments at the time of the vote, but okay.
Sure, we can do that, if you want, next time we meet, we can, we can say that, or if there's any other things. But what I want to do is say, here's the document, we can do it like that, we can say, here's the document, here are some amendments to the document, these didn't come out of the committee, but in the meantime, it became clear. This is a good idea, and we, and we can vote, I, probably next time, because we're coming up on our self-imposed limit, but we can vote to recommend some amendments to the document. I'm completely fine with that. I just want it to be very clear to everyone who's involved, what actually came out of the Charter Review process, and what are other good ideas. I'm not disputing the value of those ideas, and I'm not disputing our authority to make those amendments. I just want it to be clear to people.
Just, just for clarification, Tom, all of the changes that we've already looked at and we thought were good, that the city attorney has granted, we should present those as the document the council should approve. Are you in agreement with that?
I'm just saying.
That's not what you're talking about, you're talking about brand-new stuff, like, this is brand-new.
Yeah, exactly.
And we're gonna present it as a request by the mayor, et cetera, at the time. I have no problem with that.
Right, so we're just saying, here's what came out of that process, and part of that process was the attorney review.
Right, what they're getting is amended document from the, original from the Charter Review, amended based on the city attorney's opinions.
Right.
Okay. Maybe, yeah, we, we finished with Article 5, so why don't we call that, Tom?
Yeah, that seems like a great point, I will, thanks for all your hard work on this, guys.
Yeah.
Want to meet next week, or do you want to take a week off and meet in two weeks? Uh, I'd sort of like to just figure this out now while we're all here.
Yeah, next week's fine.
Okay, I'm just gonna.
Right now, I have a CPA meeting on Thursday, so Thursday would be okay with me?
I think Thursday will work for me too, I'm pulling up the city calendar to see.
I don't know.
A better job.
Peg would have to schedule the Zoom meeting to see if there's anything in there.
Yeah, well, currently, oh, the ranked choice voting committee is meeting at 6:00.
Oh, right.
Thursday.
Yeah, I was gonna say, right, there's.
Hey, guess what, I have no day next week where I'm free.
Why don't we make it, how about Tuesday? What Tuesday?
I got ordinance on Tuesday.
The 23rd, Thursday the 23rd?
Thursday the 23rd works just fine.
And we should be able to finish this?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think.
I'll say this, we finish it, we won't put a time limit on it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we got through five out of nine articles, and like, the ninth article is not gonna take a lot of time to talk about.
No, that was a lot of cuts that we just made, because they were from the original document, Trent.
Yeah, yeah. So, I think we're, I think we're doing good, I think we made a lot of progress, and I'm happy with, I'm happy that so far, there hasn't been a lot of really major stuff. So I'll go in and I'll, I'll do some sort of wordsmithing on this and, and just get.
I'll send you this, Tom, I'll send you this again in Word form. Hopefully, it translates when you upload it. If it doesn't, I can give you a jump drive, I'll just drop it off at your house. Just let me know if, if it all comes through okay.
Yeah, we'll figure that out.
Because sometimes it gets screwed up, all right? And I need to try and go through it. If you look at my clean draft, that may be a way in which, because I can't cut and paste in this, we're going to just change that to match what we did tonight.
So the only thing is, when you send the clean draft, if you could just send it in Word, because I have the PD.
Exactly.
Like, the comments are like on the wrong pages, the whole thing, I was.
No, no, that, yeah.
Hour or two today trying to.
But, as Peg mentioned, she had problems opening that, and it all got jumbled, so, if you, if you open it and it doesn't look clean, it doesn't have the same formatting like this does, then let me know. I'll bring you a jump drive with the two of them.
All right, we'll make it work.
Okay, thanks, I move adjourned.
Oh, hold on.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Yes, allotted a motion to adjourn, unless Peg, do you? All right, all in favor, we have a roll call, Peg.
Aye.
Counselor Rest.
I'm concerned, Peg wanted to do something, and she.
Fine, we'll move on.
Well, what?
We'll get it next time. We'll get it next time.
You sure?
Yeah, well.
Oh, wait, was it the thing with the rule?
Yeah, but we'll, we can talk about it at the next meeting, because we're not having a city council meeting before the next meeting, so.
Oh, all right.
I think we should, just to go on that, you should find the language that we finally looked at, and we should.
I sent it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So let's, let's, let's handle that first next time, so we don't forget it.
Okay.
All right, so then, I guess we all voted, so I think we're adjourned.
Thank you very much.
All right, so everyone, have a great evening.
Thank you.